Right here, okay. Call the meeting to order, City Council, April 2nd, 2013. Ready your council meeting. Would everybody stand for the pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Middleton.
Here.
Council President Henderson.
Here.
Counselor Grant.
Here.
Counselor Folsom.
Here.
Counselor Butterfield.
Here.
Counselor Langer.
Here.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. We have four items. The approval of March 19th, 2013, City Council meeting minutes. Resolution 2013-16, appointing Jack Hopper to the Library Advisory Board. Resolution 2013-017, appointing Liz Meyer to the Library Advisory Board. And Resolution 2013-0018, appointing Pat Reisner to the Library Advisory Board.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Presentations. Do we have any students out here tonight that...athletes or scouts? Nobody today?
Okay. The next...
I'm going to read a proclamation. It's for National Library Week, which is very important, everybody listen up. Whereas the Sherwood Public Library and libraries everywhere play a vital role in supporting the quality of life in their communities, and whereas libraries have historically serviced...served our nation's greatest equalizer of knowledge by providing free access to all, and whereas libraries work to meet changing needs of their users by improving collections, increasing programming, and expanding library services outside library walls, whereas librarians are trained professionals helping people of all ages and backgrounds find and interpret the information they need to live, learn, and work in a challenging economy, whereas libraries, library workers, and volunteers continuously grow and evolve in how they provide for the needs of every member of the communities. Whereas Sherwood Library and the Friends of the Library, the Sherwood Community and libraries across America are now celebrating National Library Week. And I would say, we just had a big meeting on the library, and I don't think anybody can say we don't have the best library. We just have a fantastic library, fantastic staff. Can't say enough about them. Anybody have anything else?
I second your comments about the library.
The next proclamation I have is for Arbor Day, which is coming up on the 19th of April. Whereas in 1872, the first Arbor Day was observed in Nebraska with the planting of more than a million trees. Whereas the Sea of Sherwood has been Tree City USA since 2005 and has received the designation for the last eight years, whereas trees provide many comforts such as shade, clean air, beauty, and increasing property values. Whereas having a beautiful tree planted in our community is important to our citizens. I, Bill Middleton, Mayor of Sherwood, do hereby proclaim April 19th, 2013 Arbor Day. And we also have an Arbor Day event going on, which is Friday, April 19th, at the swale of the east side of southwest Richland Park Circle. It's off a sunset. So bring your shovels and gloves. So obviously, we're going to be planting some trees. I'll be there, some of the other council people will be there, so... If you have any questions, just get ahold of us later. And the last one, I have a proclamation of...did anybody have any comment on Arbor Day? Nope, okay. Washington County Oregon Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation. Whereas child abuse and neglecting is a complex and ongoing problem in our society affecting many children in Washington County, and whereas every child is entitled to be loved, cared, nurtured, feel secure, and be free from verbal, sexual, and emotional and physical abuse and neglect. Whereas Washington County has dedicated individuals and organizations who work daily to encounter the problem of child maltreatment and to help parents obtain the assistance they need. Whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among family, social services, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Child abuse prevention awareness this month. That's it for proclamations. Citizens' comments? Do I have...I have the forms here. Oh, sorry, didn't see them. Jim?
Yes. I have Robert James Clause 22211 Southwest Pacific Highway. I have two things. I'm delighted to see that you've not changed your form on citizen comments. But let me give you a hint if you get an attorney that is not advocating for this piece of nonsense. There was a minister in Salem...now, I'm not going to go any further because Mr. Gall has high-priced attorneys that he can bill you for, that right after Abraham Lincoln was shot, ran up and down the street yelling, "Hooray for Jeff Davis." They tried to prosecute him. And you know what happened? The state of Oregon paid that minister a lot of money. Now, you might just check that case out because it's still good law. Now, the reason is, in 1917, a man named Abrams was opposed to our brilliant Woodrow Wilson sending troops to keep Stalin and Lenin in power. And he put some leaflets in the building of the New York building, and it said, "Don't do anything violent, don't do anything wrong, but this is bad public policy," and they put him in prison. I'll give you the spelling of his name, you can look up the case. That was good law until Brandis and Holmes thought about it because bad tendencies, which Oregon has never recognized, were held big and I get. Check what's happened to that case since. That's bad law now. You have to have an immediate physical threat to shut off speech. I won't tell you anything, but what do you think it's about when you come here and you're complaining about something? It's character assassination. It's character complaining. You're saying somebody can't do their job. For heaven's sakes, what do you think a public meeting is all about? But you go on doing what you're doing because you have an advocate legal system that's gaining you personal liability. And if you don't believe me, just check the recent case where a university professor had to pay his own fees for doing what you're doing. People are getting tired of this. Brandis had...Dewey's idea was the idea that made America great and expand, and Holmes called it the marketplace of ideas. Doesn't matter which one you follow, what you folks are doing is neither. I wouldn't even sit on a council that tells fellow Americans, "You can't express your opinion to me as vociferously you want," unless I had serious totalitarian tendencies. In other words, I wanted to shut people up because I didn't know what I was doing and I didn't want it exposed. Now, I can't even believe this is occurring. It's content, it's not time, it's placed restrictions. You haven't even got restrictions in here on what you write and hand in. Now, I know at least one member of the council doesn't leave free speech to the grave, he'll use self-help. But that's a very bad idea because you're exposing yourself legally. Understand, you don't have a city attorney. What you have is an advocate that whatever you want, he's going to advocate, and bill us to defend you. At a point, you may find that's a bad idea. Now, the last thing is, we're trying to get some of order out of our water mess because we're trying to develop. You have a fee you charge people. It's based on Clean Water's formulas. So when Clean Water had Bob Cruz visit our property before he retired, and he said, "Let's get this right. They're reading this formula to bill you money when you have the only stormwater facility and it isn't ratioed to the density of the mass you have to absorb water." Now, I'm probably misstating a little what Bob said because at my age, my memory's not very good. But he said, "They can't bill you money because you have the stormwater facility they're using, and the amount of impervious service you have is not using up your facility." What is using up our facility is you ran Woodhavens water on us illegally, you took it out of a watershed, and you run it on us illegally to handle your overrun. You're doing exactly the same thing on McFaul. Now, all we're asking is that somebody meet with us, somebody talk to us, so we can say we've exhausted administrative remedies. Because you can't develop here anymore. You can't use your own property. You can't get your credits. You're charging these stormwater fees. You're charging for using somebody's property and then charging them. And you know what that's like? That's like running your cattle on somebody's place and then rustling their calves and telling them, "Well, I've got cows out there, they belong to me." You're using the property of another to make money. You're not making any allowance if they're running your stormwater. Take ferrets. Are any of you aware ferrets doesn't have any stormwater systems? What they allowed Sam Goddard to do was rip the street, leave the burrow pits, and the water runs down on the fish and wildlife. And you bill ferrets for the fish and wildlife handling their water. That's a great deal. That's an imaginative deal. And what I'm hoping is, at some point, you start realizing, some of us really think, if you own the property, and I know you understand this, Matt, full, good, and well, it's your property. It's not there for your use for some period while the city sees how much money they can get out of it. And this gets more and more frustrating because you go to Clean Water Services, they say, "No, no, 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 no. You have a stormwater facility. I don't care how much impervious you've got. You've got more than an adequate facility. In fact, you've got the regional facility." Then you come back and say, "Well, no, 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 we've got a formula." You've got a formula, but it's based on whether or not...anyway, the long and short is, we're trying to solve it, and we're getting no place. Just getting no place. Now, this may not sound serious to you people, but you can't develop a piece of property. Those buildings are sitting vacant out there on the highway that Lucas put up because you can't pay the fees that the city's trying to charge to build there. Now, I know it's valuable staff, but I can't believe letting those vacant...those buildings sit vacant while we conjure up some fee makes any sense. But I'm asking for help. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to tell you because this is...this is something we've gone every possible place we could, and they come back and say, "But they're using your stormwater facility. They're committing destructive waste." But you can't get this staff to a bargaining table. So I don't want to tell you, but we can't move forward because the engineer working for us said you're going to have to litigate. I wish it was some question, Bill, because if you want to come out and visit it, you want to come out and look at it, you're free to. But there's no...when we tried to get Sheldon out there, he couldn't look at it because Gall won't let him go on private property to investigate. He could stand right there and see the water coming off of Shannon's, but he can't enter the property and investigate. How can you have a solution when you're doing that? You can't...you can't work with it. And it's very, very frustrating, and actually, I'm very sorry to bring it up, but it starts right here. If you had not limited information, you'd be getting information, you'd known this before now. And I will tell you truthfully, the majority of this council would have an investigative team and solve the problem. Now, can I get any help? Can any councilman come out there? Can anybody come out and look at it? Look at the destruction that's gone on to that piece of property. Look at the running that's going on to that property, and look at the amount of area we have.
But Jim, I think that'd be staff, though. It wouldn't be us coming out and making the decision.
No, the staff can't enter our property. That's...wasn't that what you said when you were standing up on the bank?
Well, this isn't working, but I will share that staff had one on just to do...we need to insert parts of this property, and it's come to counseling in the past that we've had staff on the property and not allowed what we've been doing maintenance. So we do not go on private property to do any type of work out of public works. So that's where we stand at on that. We stay in public land only, and if there's authorization and some sort of signature, I'd be more than happy to go out and take a look, and I'll take our engineer with us and take a look. But that's where we stand about getting on private property.
Now, let's stop Craig right there. Do you have trouble going on McFaul's when you clean that sewer line? You asked for permission, did you get it?
We did one time, too.
Yeah, you bet you did.
Okay.
The point I'm making, Bill, is, you know, they would enter McFaul when they wanted to clean it and look at it. They won't enter the home place when they have to investigate what they've done. Now, we've even had the engineer that worked on it out there and said, "This is destructive waste. They've illegally redirected a stream system on you, and then you can't get anybody there." We had Clean Water Services there, we've had the county there, which is different than Clean Water Services in that sense. And they've all said, "How are they billing you, given the small impervious area you have with your stormwater facility?" Said, "Be me." Now, we can't get investigated.
Let's go...I'll go ahead and talk to Joe tomorrow, and he'll talk to Craig, and I'll get back with you. I guarantee I'll get back with you.
I would really appreciate it, and I apologize.
Not a problem.
But it's to the point when an engineer...on McFaul, we had four engineers quit us over the same thing. Glatte would not do what the engineers were hearing Clean Water Service tell them to do. No. They just finally all quit. They said, "Why are you paying $200,000 for something that should cost 40?" You can't live in a situation when they hide behind the city manager and won't let them come on this. So if you can talk to him, I'd appreciate it.
I'll talk to him tomorrow.
But it's...if anybody has...any of the council want to come out there and look at it?
No, it should be a staff issue. But I'll get with you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much.
Susan?
Susan, Clause 22211 Southwest Pacific Highway. Really, it's pretty sent...pretty simple. If the city had proper easements, or a license, or something that allowed them to go on our property or through our property, then Craig could go on the property. Because there is nothing, the city's not paid for anything, but they've been continue...continuing to push that stormwater through both our home place and the McFaul place, and they've been doing it for years. And we've had city manager after city manager say, "Hey, we're going to do something about it." And so...and I finally...I emailed Joe, and Joe said, "Let Craig take care of it." Because here's where it is. We are getting charged stormwater fees, and I'm not paying them anymore because this is ridiculous. This is so far out of whack. We have a portion of our town running through our property in stormwater, and we are getting charged for stormwater fees, and when I don't pay it, then they send it to collections. And so I talked to Craig, and Craig said, you know, all he's doing is looking at the utility bill. If you don't pay for a certain amount of time, then they automatically send it to collections. Well, that's our credit report, that's crazy. So we're at a point...I mean, everybody sees the water going through there. Thank you, Bill, let's get it done. Craig is not really the person to do it because it's a combination of the city's got to get a right-of-way, or a license, or something, and we have a tremendous amount of water that's been going through that property, both of the properties, for years, and it hasn't been treated because they can't come on the property. The one time they came on, when they asked permission to clean the sewer, we gave them permission. But they don't come on and do any maintenance work, so we have the degradation of our property in addition to the fact that we haven't even given permission for you guys to do that. So, thank you, let's get it taken care of.
Okay. Craig will...Craig doesn't have the best history on everything around here for that, so he will be involved, and then he can get with an engineer and get with the city manager.
Well, and the other just minor thing is, I would like those bills pulled away from that credit report fidelity, the collection people, because I'm not going to pay those. It's not that much money, but seriously, this has been so many years. Let's get it done. And, I mean, if we were going to count how many years you guys owed us money for running water through our property versus the amount that you're trying to charge us, again, it's way out of whack, and we want to solve it peacefully and just in a nice way, but I don't want the credit report harmed either. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Susan. Any other citizen comments? New Business. Resolution 2013-019, authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract for the Marjory Stewart Senior Center remodel project.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council? Is this on? Sorry, if my voice is a little gravelly, I've been fighting a cold lately. Before, it was a resolution to authorize city manager to execute a construction contract with Russell Construction for improvements to the Marjory Stewart Senior Center. Basically, the city went to Washington County and obtained a grant through the community development block grant. We applied for a grant amount of $179.9, which was awarded to us. A portion of that block grant is split up between design and construction. Basically, the construction amount was $152,512. The overall project amount as budgeted for the entire project was $221,263. Basically, the county and the city...the city was awarded the block grant in February of 2012, and the city entered into an agreement with Washington County to perform those remodel based on that agreement and block grant amount. The city hired OTAC Architects, Inc., to perform architectural design documents for the city to put out for bid. Their contract was basically based on the work that they had previously done in developing the plans and the general layout, design concept earlier, several years earlier, for the community center. So we did do a competitive bid for the architects. They were the winning bid for that project, so we had them do this work. The bid amounts that we came in with, we had three successful responsive bidders. The low bid was $195,333. That really was well over our $152K mark, significantly over. So we're basically $42,821 over what our budgeted amount was. We had assumed a much lower amount, somewhere between $135 and $152, as being what we'd expected the bids to come in at. Since that time, city staff has been in negotiation with Russell Contracting...or Construction to come up with alternative methods of reducing that cost, to try and get it down so that we can figure out what items we need to cut to get it down as close as we can to the original budgeted amount from the CBG, which is $152. We've finally figured out that if we can add some money from the Parks Capital Fund project amount of about $30,000, that we can, for about $180, $182, we can come up and do the improvements as originally identified in our bid set, with the exclusion of the flooring. That might be a little bit different. That's going to be a change. We're going to have to work through the architect and Kristin and the Senior Center to come up with a system alternative that is acceptable to them, that is less expensive than the one that we originally selected in the bid documents. Basically, what we're looking at right now is a...an approval to have the city manager be authorized to sign a contract with the contractor, Russell Construction, for a contract amount of $182, not to exceed the $182 mark. If it's adopted, if this resolution is adopted, then the notice to award will be sent out tomorrow. We'll do a seven-day wait, and then we'll finalize the contracts next week and get them started with a notice of issue to proceed. We're under a time crunch with this one. If we delay, basically, the next council meeting is in May, early May. That sets the construction date off over a month. The bids for these things are pretty much set that they'll accept like a 30-day wait. It's good for about 30 days. If we extended it out, we'd have to get a contractor approval to basically guarantee that bid price until that date, but it also throws our construction date and everything else that we've arranged with the Senior Center as far as, you know, events and things like that out of whack. So city staff is respectfully requesting that the city council authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Russell Construction for an amount not to exceed of $182,512.
Counselor comments?
I just have a couple of quick questions for clarification for all of us, and I should be more up to date on this, and I think I know. But Kristin, can you tell me, the Friends are making a donation to this project, is that correct?
Yes, they're contributing $5,000.
Yeah, I believe that was...and what is the city's portion versus the grants portion before we had this cost overrun, or this bid that was higher than expected?
The city's portion, if I can do some quick...was $41,663, including the $5,000.
Including the $5,000, so it's basically $36,000.
Correct.
And now, we're thinking it'll be something like $66,000.
Yes.
So it would be about 32 percent, somewhere in there, of the total cost. Something...I did some math. I love my phone. But, okay, so having sat through the process, I actually am in the Senior Center pretty frequently. I just want to communicate to the rest of council and the citizens that I think it was a very good look to look to taking that money from the Parks area because although there are a lot of seniors served in that building, there are a lot of activities that go on in that building that serve many citizens. Each and every week, I personally know that the Voices for the Performing Arts have over 60 families that go and use that facility. There's Weight Watchers and all different kinds of activities, Scouts, Boy Scouts, so...and it's time. The building was finished in 1980, is that correct? 82, because we just did the 30-year. So I still think, you know, given we have that grant money, from my seat, it looks like a really good investment. I appreciate all you're doing to try to make this work in spite of the high bid.
Bill?
Bill?
Well, I've got three questions. One is more of a statement than anything. I really don't like Robin Peter to pay Paul. I don't like different end of this reserve fund that even though we have, to pay for them. I don't like the fact that I feel like I'm being hijacked with this timeframe. We've got to do it now, or we're going to get burned. I don't like...I'd like to know why we ended up where we're at, and as far as I'm concerned, if it takes three or four months to get the budget down to where we can live with it, why not wait? I mean, why do we have to do it right now? Is the building going to fall down?
The way the grant is written, we have until July 1st, or July 15th, July 15th, in our agreement with them, to basically utilize the money for construction. So it's...the grant itself is time-limited for use. So basically, we're working under a tight constraint to get the project designed, bid, and built within that timeframe before, basically, that we use it. My understanding is use or lose it to a certain extent. The second problem that we saw was, the engineering department is not really good at estimating architectural projects. We basically gave the architect a budget and said, "Please continue with your design." So, basically, we're working under a tight constraint to get the project designed, bid, and built within that timeframe before, basically, that we use it, my understanding is use or lose it to a certain extent. The second problem that we, we saw was, the engineering department is not really good at estimating architectural projects. We basically gave the architect a budget and said, please continue with your design and make it fit within this budget, guide us through this process. And we basically had said, keep it, we told them, keep it low. We gave them a low number. We were trying to say, fit it into this thing. It didn't work out that way. We were sort of told that it was going, this is what you could do with this, here's your design parameters, here's the things, we all think it's going to work. Bids came in, we, it was a big blow. We could have probably spent some money on architectural cost consultants to confirm those costs, but we were trying to limit the amount of consultant design costs so that we could put it all into construction costs. And we were hoping that it was done well enough that, or had enough experience that we could, we could work it in that way, and it didn't come out that way. I don't believe anybody on the design team was prepared for the type of cost overrun that actually came in.
If, I'm sorry, if I could mention as well, the original cost estimates that we had when we did the feasibility study was also from the same company that worked with us most recently in putting together the plan. So, we were really having faith in them, that the original numbers that they gave us that we based the grant application on were accurate, and unfortunately, they weren't.
How much contingency funds do you have included in this?
About two thousand dollars.
So, you've got that as thin as you can go?
I've got it as thin as I can go. If we make the wrong decision, we're going to be-
What happens if we get in the middle of this thing and something else comes up?
I don't think that the, it's not necessarily a complex project from the standpoint of, are we going to find something unusual? It's a question of, you've got to cut through the concrete flooring to put some plumbing in, and that's just a cost. And is it unusual? No. Is there going to be something unusual with it? No. I think the, the costs associated with plumbing, which was a big item, big-ticket item, and the flooring was a huge item. I think that, and those two items right there comprise most of the cost overrun that we were looking at. The flooring, definitely. I think it was, the flooring itself was one of those ticket items where it looked really good, and we, we said, does it fit within our budget? And they said, yeah. Came in at a high expense because of what has to go on to get the flooring down, all the prep work that wasn't included in the overall cost estimate at the time that we were told we were good to go. So, you know, there's some items in there that I don't think are going to change. There's not anything unusual, it's just going to cost what it costs to, to get some of these things in. We're moving walls, we're digging through concrete for putting in plumbing, have to reroute plumbing and walls, we have to redo electrical, some HVAC. I think the, the costs for things like the credenza and the front desk items, they aren't, they aren't excessive by, by what I can see. It's some of these other costs that we just sort of didn't get a good feel for, which was the plumbing and running those things through, especially for the flooring.
Counselor Butterfield, I want to have Craig Givens, our finance director, talk about this reserve fund and kind of talk about what that's there for and what the risk is if you go the route and spend some more dollars out of that fund to move the project forward versus waiting. So, Craig, can you talk about that, please, a little bit?
Yes. First, my apologies. I did not review this memo before it went out, and the phrase you're referring to is an inaccurate phrase. This is not a reserve. What this is, is money in the general construction fund that is not dedicated to any other purpose. It has no strings attached to it. There is, it is the fund balance of unrestricted revenue. And the way the cash flow works is that that fund balance will be sixty thousand dollars at the end of next year. So, when this problem came up, this seemed important enough to me to mention that there is this small margin of cash in the general construction fund that could be tapped. In my mind, in the back of my mind, it was, it's my backup on the turf project if anything goes wrong there. But this sort of jumped to the head of the line. So, it is not a Parks replacement reserve. It is unrestricted fund balance. Does that make sense? Yes?
So, when we set up this idea that we would begin to prepare to maintain and serve the buildings and other assets of the community, it's this type of money that we're setting aside, right? No?
No, no, it's not. This is, this is fund balance. If you want to start setting aside money to replace this building, then we will do that in a reserve line item.
So, when we're talking in budget, and maybe other people can help me, when we've been talking in budget and saying, we need to prepare, we need to be able to say, this needs to be done, and so how are we going to pay for it?
We have been setting up equipment reserves in each of the enterprise funds.
Equipment reserves?
Yes, you soon knows.
But not maintenance or capital construction or-
Right. We are beginning, in the new, in the budget that's coming up, you'll see some capital replacement reserves being generated. You will also see a reserve that we start for the turf replacement. Those are specific reserve funds.
Where would something like this fall if we weren't looking at a grant or whatever, if we were just looking at needing to make these modifications because they are needed?
This sixty thousand dollars is fund balance in general construction.
But no, I'm talking about the thirty thousand dollars that we need. Where would that fall in your, if, in the perfect world of budgeting, where would that come from? The capital?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and if it wasn't in the capital, then it would have to come from general fund.
So, it's what we're working towards, though, is to maintain our assets, is to have these, these-
Yes.
Dollars and monies on hand. Kristin, one more question, maybe this would help clarify for the rest of council who haven't been attending the process and the meeting. So, we were notified in February, so can you tell us in a short synopsis, the timeline of two thousand and twelve, so over a year ago?
Right.
The timeline of, of how it's taken so long, and also what the necessity is about the bathrooms? Because it's, that's a lot of what you were talking about, and there's a pretty big issue with the bathrooms.
Right, yes, and especially if you've been in there, you will know. So, we were awarded the notice to proceed last August, and in the fall, we started putting together our documents and our RFP, and I believe that it finally went out December, November, December, and it took us that long to get an architect on board, to go through that process. There's a certain amount of stuff that you have to do with the county as well, and have meetings back and forth. So, it's just taken us a while to get to where we're at, and we really tried to condense the design period. We worked on it pretty quickly, and we're working on it up until the last minute. I do want to mention that I don't believe that we're at risk of losing the money. We can file for an extension. So, I do want to say that. This isn't a, if we can't do this tonight, it's never going to happen type of project. We can receive an extension. I think what the bigger risk is, is what are the bids going to come in next time, and is the cost going to go up? And looking at the budget, and looking at the items that they recommended that we remove, there's just not, besides the floor, which I picked out, I admit, it was really beautiful. But besides the floor, it was a thousand dollars here, a thousand dollars there. There was not any other large-ticket items, and that's what makes me nervous about committing to saying that we can get down to the original dollar amount. I'm just afraid that it's not realistic, that we're not going to get there unless we remove an important element of the project. If we do that, I do need to talk to the county about that, because some of the stuff that we had in here, we said we were going to complete, like, we were going to redo the floor, we were going to change out the desk, we are going to add another ADA unisex restroom. So, if we're not doing any of those things, we're not doing what we agreed to do. So, unless we really take out an element of it, I don't see us being able to change it. The bathrooms are ugly, there's no insulation whatsoever, they're not truly ADA accessible. We have to prop open the doors in order for people to get in there, which obviously doesn't give a lot of privacy. So, with remodeling them, we'll be able to actually close the doors on the bathroom, have the sinks be accessible, actually be adding a sink, and then adding a unisex ADA restroom, which will be a huge improvement as well.
Right now, trying to get a wheelchair in is nigh on too impossible. It's a geometric-
It's a night of return.
Yeah, it's a geometric challenge every time.
Right.
Which, you know, is challenging. So, Bob, do you think it's, the market is heating up, and that's why we're possibly going to see this in other things, too? Do you think that's what we're seeing?
I think there are certain ticket items that are going up in cost as the market starts to pick up. Construction is picking up across the board, and usually what you're going to see is that certain ticket items do go up. I'm more used to roadway and rock prices and things like that, but I think building steel is usually a prime indicator of, you know, general market pricing in the area. If it starts to tick up, then you can also see other things, which is telling us that general construction is going to be going up, in at least the business sense, or, you know, commercial, industrial, stuff like that. How much of an uptick? I don't know. Again, a lot of this stuff, private development, it runs its own course. I'm not really into that, that much. So, I can't really definitively say that I expect it to be this much or that much. I'm just generally feeling that we are looking at maybe some elevated prices, but I can't guarantee it.
Counselor Butterfield, you said you had three questions, and I heard one. So, I want to make sure that we-
Well, I thought you had a couple in there.
He said it was statement.
Statement's last question, so.
I will. I really think that, you know, there's an opportunity here for us to, to communicate a little bit more. I don't like getting sprung at the last minute on something like this. For me to digest it and to find out in here that, you know, we don't have a reserve fund that we're dipping money out of, I really think that needs to get cleaned up out of this document. I don't want our constituents to think that we're robbing Peter to pay Paul, just to make something happen. I want them to know that we did our best job at getting this price as low as we could and still have a quality product. It kind of scares me when you say, well, we're not very good at this architectural thing. Man, what's going to happen on the next job that comes up where there's some architectural stuff in it? So, I just don't want this to happen again. I want to make sure that we're upfront and everybody can see what's going on.
Counselor, I can certainly address some of your concerns, which I understand. I got this at four-thirty today. So, you know, the bids are open late Thursday, Kristin was out Friday, these are excuses, but this is what happened. Bob was out Monday. My direction was either whittle it down so we live within the money we have, and if we can't do that, let's figure out a way to fund this, because I think it's an important project that we need to get done for our seniors. So, the last-minute nature of it, I know, and we're also working on the fact that we didn't think you were going to have a meeting in two weeks. If you had a meeting in two weeks, because this would be the only item on it, we probably wouldn't have, you know, presented it in the way we did tonight. So, you don't, you're never forced to take action, even though this came in. And if you want to wait on this and digest it as a council and come back in two weeks and act on it, that's fine. If you want us to do other research or try to dig a little bit deeper, make sure we're covering our bases, we'll do that. So, I want to reassure you, you're not forced to make a decision tonight. The world does not come to an end if you decide not to make a decision as a council tonight.
All I'm saying is, give us this information a couple of weeks before we do something like this, so we can digest it. That's all I'm asking for.
Sure.
And maybe I picked this particular source, but I want the thing to go through. It's not that I'm against seniors, I just think that the way this happened is the right-
Maybe I just think too.
Well, and I think we've been used, in this economy, the reality is bids have come in lower, for the most part. So, this is a new, at least recently, a new phenomenon, that a bid came in significantly higher.
That's why we need it sooner-
Yep.
-rather than later.
So, one option is to delay action on this tonight, and either come back in two weeks and act on it, or come back at your early May meeting. I just want to make sure that if you choose one or, one of those routes, that you understand the risks and, and what the reality is. But the world does not come to an end if you don't act on this tonight.
Well, I think in listening to Kristin, these are improvements that are not only wanted, but they are needed. You know, our, our seniors need them, we need access for disabled. This is a facility that is utilized across the board, not only by just the seniors, although we need this facility to service our seniors, it's utilized by cross-sections of the population. And I feel like the economy is improving, and I think if we move to delay and delay and delay, it's going to end up costing us in the end, in listening to what Kristin is saying, on there aren't big-ticket items that we could just lop off, that it's a thousand dollars here and a thousand dollars there. And I think delaying it is, could end up really costing us on a project that needs to be done. So, in listening, I feel like I would feel more comfortable moving forward than I would delaying, 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 and, and just increasing our costs in the end by inactive.
What kind of fancy floor did you pick?
It was a really pretty tile.
Well, right now, we have aggregate concrete.
Right.
Which is actually not ideal for seniors, children-
No.
Or even their dogs.
And I will also say that the seniors love the floor as well. It wasn't just me. Other options, and they picked the most beautiful one as well. But we can sure live without it and find something more reasonable.
Okay.
And I know and I would not have gone. They said it was a bit more expensive, but I had no idea.
All right, I got another fun question. So, oftentimes, I've, I've heard businesses tell a story where, now we do a remodel and we added a sink, we added a toilet, and there was a five thousand or fifteen thousand dollar additional sewer SDC charge for adding one more toilet or sink. So, do we have that sort of situation going on in this project?
Maybe we have that stuff, do we? Do you know? No. No.
Maybe we do now that I said so. That's all I was thinking about, when I heard you say we added a sink. I thought, oh, well, there's where all the money went. Okay, well, I understand Counselor Butterfield's concern, whenever something comes up as a surprise, where everybody's kind of sat back on their heels and nervous about making sure we're doing the right thing for the constituents. So, I appreciate the banter that's going on around the topic here today. I think it's, it's healthy, it's, it's to be expected when something comes as a, as a last-minute change. So, I'm glad to listen to the conversation.
And I apologize that it did just get to you this afternoon. We did start working on it as soon as Thursday afternoon, even though it was out on Friday. We all talked about it, had a conference call. It's just taken time to go back and forth between the contractor and the architect and figure out how much savings we could really find if we deducted some of these items, and it's just taken more time than we expected.
I, my concern, I certainly understand that, while I agree that these are necessary repairs, I think the most important point that Kristin's made is the fact that we applied for a grant, and that that grant has things we said we were going to do, and I've been involved in this process, and it's a very elaborate procedure you go through to describe exactly what you're going to do with the money, and you just can't turn around and not do it later. I mean, it's just from purely a matter of the grant application. And, but I'm always concerned about going into any project, and I understand, I agree with you, this doesn't sound complicated, but I, I'm always concerned about going into a project without contingency.
Two thousand dollars.
And, so, are we saying that the budget we have has contingency, or the budget, or what we're going into with is the exact number the contractor's given us, right? And there's no contingency in there now?
The number that I, that I've negotiated with the contractor is the exact amount.
Okay.
He'd be charging us whether or not he finds something else in there. I don't think so. We've done some pre-investigation to make sure that we've gotten all the stuff identified-
We've done some pre-investigation to make sure that we've gotten all the stuff identified. Basically, it would be a not-to-exceed amount.
Okay.
He gets in and he gets it done for that amount of money.
Okay.
That's what I'm expecting. The plans are fairly complete in that.
Okay.
Spec section is huge. So basically, my understanding is when I'm telling him, "This is your contract."
Okay.
I just want to walk away and when I come back, it's done and that's the amount he gets.
Right. I trust you and I agree it's not complex. It's just always from our eyes, not having been through what you've been through in the middle of the negotiation standard into something with no contingency. When we've seen project after project after project, you know, require the contingency to get completed or really this project does have a contingency, it's the general fund, right? That's the contingency. And in the same way, or the remaining money that is in the fund that Craig has described us, however, then we are asking ourselves to go into the next project without a contingency. And that is apparently the turf fields. So the turf fields, since that is coming up and it's big, when are we going to know where we're at on that and if we need a contingency on that one?
I will say that Craig has a contingency within his budget for it.
Okay.
Mine is a...
I hear you.
Protective contingency.
I budget the same way. And I know exactly what you're saying. So one more question, if I may, to Kristen. When I was involved in this block grant program, a large part of the program, in fact, a major part of what I remember doing was looking at requests for contingencies when organizations had events like this come up. And they came back to the block grant program and said, "You know, we are asking for a contingent amount of $30,000 because blah, blah, blah." Has that, I take it that process is, we've got, is there an opportunity there or are we beyond the timing of that opportunity? Or tell me about where, what opportunity there is in that way. You know what I'm talking about?
Yes, yes, I do. And we did that when we did the addition at the senior center.
Yes, we did.
We went back and got another...
In a big way, as I recall.
Yeah, $50,000, $60,000 for the grant. We could still look at that, absolutely. We just haven't had time to obviously go to them or investigate it since Thursday. So that is an option. However, as everybody probably knows, funding for CDBG has been shrinking and they don't have as much as they did probably back when you were involved. And I don't know how much they have set aside to address issues such as that and if that's something that they can accommodate or not. I've seen, sitting on the board, I've seen people come back and I've seen some requests be approved and some requests be denied, but that is an option. And I believe we can pursue that at any time, but we could do that.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, if I can mention one more thing about the contingency. One of the reasons that there is not a contingency, it's not just that we overlooked it, we do have a small contingency from the portion of our budget, but you can't ask for contingency as part of the grant. So when we go and say we want a construction contracts of this amount, they don't allow you to have contingency in there.
Oh.
So that's part of why we're in this situation as well.
Do you have something else?
Nope.
Okay. I guess the risk we run if we do not act tonight and we come back in May, that it potentially will cost us more. And either, like Councilor Grant said, we either go into the general fund like we did for the turf field, if we all remember, that's requiring general fund money, or we tap into the, is it a general construction fund balance? And that was $60,000, you said?
Yes.
And does that roll over every year?
That's actually the number that will be there if all things go according to plan at the end of next fiscal year. So yes, it does roll over.
At the end of 2014?
Yes.
And what other, when would we tap that fund? What other circumstances would we use money from that fund?
Well, when we are doing a project for which, I don't know, something like the turf field or the senior center or improvements to this building, it's for construction projects that are not associated with enterprise funds. No streets, no water lines, none of the ratepayer stuff. These are, this fund is for construction projects that don't tie to a ratepayer revenue. Ah, except for parks' SDCs. Parks' SDCs are in this fund, but they are restricted. So I'm not telling you about that fund balance.
Right.
I'm just telling you about the unrestricted portion of this fund.
I think that's why we're going to have to make some really very severe, uncomfortable decisions during budget time this year too, if we want to have replacement funds, upkeep funds. So we don't have to have these discussions. We will have a contingency fund. So we're going to really have to really look and see where we're spending our money next year. It's not going to be easy and it's going to be painful. So just letting everybody know, the budget process is not going to be easy. Any more questions?
My only other comment would be I've only attended two meetings for the Community Development Block Grant Program, but I don't think there's any money left. I mean, the list that I saw was well above 150%. Of course, they only funded, you know, 100% of their grant, so multiple grantees got only a portion of their request. So, and they're even looking at cutting staff because these are all HUD funds from the federal government. And as we all know, that branch of government is having a little trouble funding itself right now. So I don't, they're not anticipating having as many funds in the next fiscal year as they had this year. So I don't know that process that you mentioned regarding the senior center addition, but I'd be reluctant to think that there was any money left over. And if it was, it's probably been already asked for.
Multiple times.
Multiple times. So that's all I have.
No further questions? Call for a motion.
I move that we adopt Resolution 2013-019.
Second.
Roll call.
Pick one.
Mayor, it's a resolution.
Okay.
No, we're also just a majority vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
I didn't oppose it.
I know I didn't expect that. No, that was fine.
Appreciate it, Bill.
City manager report.
That was a very good discussion. Thank you. And Councilor Butterfield, I heard you, so.
Thank you.
The only thing I want to remind folks, and you may have questions about some of the construction activity that's going on in town, and Bob's here and Tom can respond because things are hopping in Old Town in terms of construction. Mayor Middleton mentioned budget and we're going to transition very quickly into budget. So just as a reminder for the council and for the public, this Friday, I will release my proposed budget. It will be available on the website. The budget committee members will get my proposed budget delivered to them. And then the next step in the process is April 22nd, which is the first budget committee meeting. And then we have scheduled three Mondays, April 22nd, April 29th, and May 6th. I think Mayor Middleton is correct. It is going to be a tough budget. It's been a tough budget to put together and I think it will be a good debate and discussion among not just the budget committee, but hopefully the public. And I hope the public is more engaged than maybe they've been in the past and is involved with the process. So you'll be getting that proposed budget on Friday. And if you have questions and things like that before that, let us know. And I just kind of remind everybody of the schedule, so. Questions for me on anything before, any questions on the construction projects in town? Councilor Grant, it looks like you have a question.
Just, so we're expecting, anticipating to see a budget that will balance, right? I mean, you're saying it's going to be tough, but you're going to give us a budget that will balance.
By law, I have to give you a budget that's balanced.
Right, right, right.
The challenge will be, I think some people will have different ways of balancing the budget.
I see.
And that will be the discussion. And I think that's, we've had that discussion internally in staff and there's been tough choices. And you've got short-term decisions and long-term decisions. I think the mayor is correct. It's going to be, it doesn't get any easier. But no, by law, I have to submit to you a proposed budget that balances and that's what I'll be doing on Friday.
And that budget, balanced budget means that the anticipated revenues meet or exceed the anticipated expenditures. We're not using fund balance to balance the budget.
That was very important and it's always important, but I think in my first budget and my role as city manager, I felt very strongly I had to balance without using fund balance. So you'll get all that work. You're going to have questions. I encourage you to ask questions. And I just think it's going to be, I hope it's a healthy discussion about, you know, what are the priorities for this community in terms of services? And what kind of choices should we make? And I hope you get some input from the community. So you're not up there, just the seven of you in June, making decisions without any input in terms of the choices that I'm recommending. And again, it's a recommendation to you. You ultimately are the board as the elected body that make those decisions. So this is what we're all about in terms of democracy and I hope people are involved. So.
So in hoping that they become involved, can, will there be then citizen comment allowed at each of the budget meetings?
We have proposed, I don't know what you've done in the past, but I think my experience in other communities is when you have budget committee meetings over multiple nights, the first night you're going to get a lot of information. The budget committee may say, "You know, Steph, we need more information on XYZ," or "Can you go look at this scenario?" So we're going to come back, you know, within a week with no new information. And I think the public, it's my personal view, the public should have a right to say and comment, "Okay, the staff went and did stuff." So we have put into the agenda public testimony at each night.
So...
And ultimately, it's up to the budget committee to decide how you want to run your meeting and things like that, but that's how we are setting it up. I think you need to allow the community to participate in the process, not just on the first night.
I think that we have done that last year. Is that correct? That we did that last year? We did allow citizen comment. We didn't have a lot. We did have some, as I recall. So because people will be watching this and preparing and saying, "Well, I can be involved in this process," can you remind us of the dates because it would take me a while to find them on my phone?
The budget will be released this Friday.
Right.
The first budget meeting is Monday, April 22nd. And then April 29th, what time does it start usually?
6:30?
6:30 normally.
6:30. 22nd of April and then April 29th, and then if we need to go three nights, which I think may be likely, May 6th. And if you don't get done in three nights, then you just keep, until you get done. And as a reminder, the budget committee approves the budget, but ultimately the city council adopts the budget in June. So you're the final decision-maker and you have to make a decision and adopt a budget by June 30th. Correct? Correct. So. Does that help, counselor?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff or myself on anything else? Counselor Henderson?
Mr. Peschmer, you want to comment on opening of railroad? And sort of the timeline for finishing it and...
Sure. I'll back up just a little bit. I was able to go out last week and visit the businesses that were open while they were doing the sidewalks. There was a lot of sidewalk work being done and there was a real spirit of cooperation between the contractor and the design team and the property owners and I just want to, and the businesses, most importantly. I just want to recognize the businesses for the efforts that they took to be cooperative through that period because it was difficult for some businesses. But the timing happened to work really well during spring break where some of the businesses didn't, had other things that they could be doing. And so there were a number of businesses actually shut down during the spring break week. As I walked, you know, down the street to visit places, you know, I would say over half of them were just closed for the day. Fat Milo's, D'Amico's, Hungry Raccoon, a number of them just basically decided to take part or all of the week off. And so, you know, I was curious about that, obviously, and started asking questions. And I think most of them understood what was needed to go on. It was spring break, their businesses were down, and so they decided that it probably wasn't going to be a very profitable week for them anyway. But I do want to acknowledge the, their efforts in order to make that particular portion of the project work. The good news is, on the opposite side of that, now railroad street's open, both the sidewalks, the street, people can now get through and essentially it is functional the way it's intended to be and will be for the next 100 years, hopefully. There is some work yet to be done there, but it's work that is better coordinated with the work that's being done on Washington Street specifically, as they're doing the furnishing zone with the exposed rock and the lights and everything else. They want to complete that all at one time. So they'll probably leave it in this transitional stage with the sidewalk there and then just gravel filled in between there and the street up until the time that they get Washington Street in the same state that it's at, and then they'll come back in and put the furnishings in, put in the rest of the concrete and everything else and finish that up. So the other part of that is, is really now getting around the corner and getting that done quickly. So they're making good progress. They've had great weather and for the most part, I've heard good things from people out there. So business cooperation is greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Tom, how would you say we compare to schedule? Seems like it's gone really fast. Was it expected to go quite that fast and we haven't really had much weather delays?
No, we haven't. And, you know, that's a good thing because unfortunately in contracts, when you do them, contractors are allowed weather delays. And we've been concerned about that because we obviously want to get this project done by cruisin'. So you expect some slip in your schedule and we haven't seen that slip. Still yet to have the contractor to show me that they're really ahead of schedule in any significant way. Maybe just a skosh, but I think they're kind of cherry-picking there. I think they really are ahead of schedule even more than they think. And if they get good weather as they turn the corner, especially as they're trying to pour the concrete, I think that they'll not only have it substantially complete, which is what we were expecting to have by cruisin', and we knew there would be some things that wouldn't, weren't in, such as lights and maybe some of the benches and some other things. So there were some things missing. They've got a good chance of maybe getting it all done and really beating down to just a few minor details. So it's encouraging. I still wouldn't, you know, make any bets, but it looks like we are not going to have any problems with our first major event of the season.
I just wanted to comment a little further that it's gone really well and it's not just weather that makes things like this go well. It's got to be well-planned out. And it looks to me like the team here, Bob Galati and Jason Waters, have done an exceptional job getting everything coordinated and lined up to take advantage of the weather. And hopefully it just continues all the way into the job, but wow, that went really good. So I think the team just needs a little attaboy for that one.
Well, thank you. And it does reflect well on them. We learned a lot from the first project. The first project, the design of the project was actually the problem more than anything else. You couldn't physically build it because of the way that it was designed in a reasonable order that wasn't extremely detrimental to businesses and to the general public and traveling. And so we took it seriously as we moved forward to make sure that the design effort was taking that into account, not only, you know, how to design it so it could be constructed in an orderly fashion, but how it could be constructed so it would have the least impact on businesses. And that was something that Bob made crystal clear to the design team as they move forward and those results show, I think, in the final product.
You just reminded me of one other thing, but the phasing plan. I think Bob Galati came up with that. But there was a lot of discussion. I think the original construction drawings showed phasing railroad street in bits and pieces. And Bob, in talking with a bunch of folks, came up with the idea of, "Let's just do the whole thing, whole of railroad at once." And wow, I'd say it paid off in a huge way. So, good job, Bob.
Tom, since the community center, you got to talk about the demolition just for two minutes or so. Because someone will say, "Hey, what happened to the building?"
I was going to save it for the urban renewal managers comments.
That's fine. You can save it. That's a good point.
Any more comments? Council comments? Announcements?
Nobody? Me? I'll be remiss if I don't mention... My button's not up, there we go. I'm part of an organization called the Sherwood Foundation for the Arts, and we're putting on a summer musical this summer, Oklahoma. And we have auditions coming up on Friday, April 12th, and Saturday, April 13th, if you go to sherwoodarts.org. We had a little article in the paper, not written by me, clearly, because it was fine by a member of our production team, all volunteers, of course. And we have auditions at a new location this year, which is at Let's Make Music. So that's Friday and Saturday, and then we'll have callbacks on the 15th, Monday night at Let's Make Music. So again, if you go to sherwoodarts.org. This is obviously, you know, a well-known musical. We will, I believe we have an age restriction, I think it's 15 or 16 and up, 16 and up, primarily because this is a, more or less, an all-adult, while it's not adult content, it is an adult musical for all intents and purposes. And so there's a lot of dancing, a lot of ensemble pieces. So the auditions are two parts, singing, obviously, and dancing. And sometimes you have to sing and dance at the same time, which is why I won't be on stage. But our production team asked me to make an announcement, since obviously, we don't have another meeting until May, and if you know anybody who's interested in being in a musical, it's on their bucket list. It's always a lot of fun. And for more information, just visit our website at sherwoodarts.org.
So in order to make sure that the young children aren't left out, we just wanted to mention that we are doing an encore performance of Disney's Little Mermaid at the Robin Hood Festival, so that the children who are younger than 16 can be involved in that. And we are going to be able, we have a lot of the original cast coming back, there are a lot that have conflicts, so we will be able to recast new children. And we will go for this production, because it's during the summer, we will go K through 12, not just 4th through 12. So the children will not be left out.
We have two weeks of Missoula, too.
Yes, two weeks of Missoula, and it's going to be Beauty, Love, and the Country Beast, which was our first Missoula 10, 11 years ago? 10 years ago? And Robinson Crusoe, right? So very fun, very fun summer for all the kids. And we're hoping to move the Royal Academy, which is part of the Robin Hood Festival, up to the new plaza. So there might even be water involved in The Little Mermaid.
Other announcements?
I'll adjourn to the U.R.